This is RadioOnFire.com, yours truly Diamond K in here as always. Coming at you from Radio on Fire, RadioOnFire.com, also theDiamondKShow.com. And there's a lot going on in the world, of course, wherever, wherever you are watching this or hearing this. So much going on and we're going to get into a lot of it, of course, that we talk politics every day. Because I believe that the world is, you know, everything is connected to politics some kind of way. But of course, we talk about other things and we talk to America through our digital news broadcasts, our social media content and 350,000 viewers per month, viewers and listeners per month. We talk politics, breaking news, celebrity info, sports, pop culture, et cetera, et cetera. And I am pleased to be able to talk to someone running for city council in Baltimore's District Number Five, Maria Vismail. Thank you for joining us. How are you doing today?
I'm doing great. Thanks for having me, Diamond. I've been following you and I definitely can say I'm doing pretty well. We came from an event earlier with the explosion. I know it's been some displaced people. So I was gracious enough to participate that in that. So I'm excited today. Definitely glad to be here.
Wonderful, wonderful. I think that that is as good a place to start as any. So for people that don't know, on August the 10th, which is my birthday, by the way.
Oh, happy birthday, by the way.
Thank you, thank you. There was a terrible explosion in Baltimore, Northwest Baltimore. And there was loss of life, like you said, people misplaced. How, how did you find out about this tragedy and what have you been doing in regards to it?
So I was actually coming from a meeting and my team started blowing up my phone. I am always on social media. I'm always, you know, listening to the radio, but I literally had just stepped out of a meeting. And so my phone is blowing up. People were texting me. I'm receiving emails and I'm like, okay, this is just part of the campaign. You know, I'm always busy. And so I jumped on social media and the very first thing before answering, you know, missed call before actually looking at an email, I hop on social media, check, you know, okay, what's going on? I follow the Baltimore Sun, I follow WBAL, and the first thing I saw is Northwest Baltimore, 4,200 block labyrinth. And I said, wait, I was in shock. I literally didn't start my car yet. I just had hot bin. And at that point, I go then to my email and I give my manager a call and they're like, are you okay? And I said, yeah, I'm great. Did you just see what happened? That's like, that's what we're calling you about. And I immediately, the first thing I thought is I called as many stakeholders as I knew. And I said, the first thing that we have to do is we have to go there and give out donations. We have to go there and check on the people, see if they're okay. And it was just the most horrific just display. Everything was in shambles. You couldn't even get through because there were firefighters, there were, you know, police officers, members of the community.
Yeah, it was terrible.
Yeah. What happened was I actually, in talking to some stakeholders and community leaders, just, you know, I think great minds think alike, we actually said, hey, let's meet as close as we can to the area. So those affected can just pick up and go, whether it's bottles of water that we bought, whether it was clothing. You know, I got a couple of pounds of food, that non-perishables. And when I got there, the Red Cross was there, Central Kitchen, Casa de Maryland, other community volunteers. And I just immediately jumped in where I saw I could help. We were, you know, organizing clothing. We were talking to folks. There were people giving out meals. So the community came together as a family, as a team. And then, you know, more recently, as of today, let, you know, week go by, I am fully committed to being mentally and spiritually and physically grounded. So I actually helped organize and co-sponsor an event with Miracles and Beyond. And we left around 3:30 today and we actually had, it was the most beautiful thing ever, a brief counselors or licensed therapists. We had a Realtor to give advice and then we also had the Miracle and Beyond CEO along with myself, giving out, you know, toiletries, gift cards while also having resources. Because a lot of people don't understand, trauma stays with you. And I believe in a holistic approach. I think sometimes we forget, yeah, you can give people resources, physical resources, whether that is, you know, a hotel temporarily or, you know, gift cards or even toiletries. But the mental aspect, I know people were crying devastated, the loss of the 20-year-old guy who is a Morgan State student. It's traumatic. And unless you deal with that on an emotional level as well, I think definitely you'll still be somewhat in disarray. So that's how we kind of handle it. We're still obviously taking donations. We're still, you know, investigating the cause of it. And I'm talking to people I know to kind of make sure as soon as I get that information, I could relay that to the community.
Yeah, I, I'm not going to go into it on this broadcast because you are running for office. But with the, with the explosion, BGE did an internal investigation. And of course, they have found themselves innocent of all wrongdoing with the amount of old and decrepit pipes around this city. And the, the amount that need to be changed, of course, they're going to say that they had nothing to do with this. This was something that happened inside that, inside of one of the homes, which is, you know, that's just crazy right there. But I'm not gonna, gonna go too deep in that. I have gone deep in that on other programs, but I don't want to put you in that situation. So how did you get involved in running for office? This is not something that I recommend for the faint at heart.
Listen, it's been, I think, since a young age. My dad, he actually marched in Million Man March. He named me Maria Mandela Vismail. My mom was a teacher. And at 10 years old, I am literally holding a picket sign, no, no, amico, and standing in front of what is now the ShopRite on Liberty Heights urging leaders along with other community stakeholders, like the Build, like, you know, different nonprofits saying, we need a resource, which is a grocery store. We will not accept another corner store. We will not accept another gas station. And from there, you know, I got my taste of civic engagement. I've always loved helping. My dad taught me, you have to be kind and fair to all, but it's your voice that'll really change it. You're not, you know, just any Joe Smo. You matter. And with that, helping others is the most important. So I spent my life, you know, obviously paying attention to leaders, being in the community neighborhood associations. At 17, interestingly enough, I was a build liaison, Baltimoreans United in Leadership. And I spoke in front of city council where I urged leaders and with the help of other liaisons, we got a grant for recreation centers when they wanted to build, you know, a baby prison in so many ways.
Yeah.
And then more recently, I've dedicated my life to criminal justice reform. I am a huge proponent of, you know, fairness and justice. And so I actually, you know, recently, just after just focusing on the campaign for the last four and a half years, was a defense investigator for the Public Defender of DC. And so I met with, I worked on over 300 plus cases, met with tons of families, you know, worked with stakeholders, police officers, judges, and I saw the real need for people that want to represent and support the marginalized. Because you'll find so many times, unfortunately, after they say, hey, you know, you're a bad seed. People don't want to touch you. People don't want to engage. And too many times than none, I still realize that the experiences that were left on me has afforded me the opportunity to continue in this mission. And I said, looking at my community, seeing the lagging schools. I grew up and I went to Grove Park Elementary. I went to Western High School, Gold Doves. And so I know what education means. I was lucky enough to graduate from Lincoln University, first HBCU. Don't let Cheney tell you otherwise. But, you know, I had the opportunity to go to Prague. I had the opportunity to be in the debate club and that afforded me, you know, so many things that made me the woman I am today. So knowing all these things, knowing about criminal justice reform, knowing about how important education is, knowing that I am easily able and readily able to communicate with stakeholders. I just took a look at what was going on. Baltimore City District Five is so disenfranchised. We are the pinnacle. A lot of people say, oh, you're going into the city? No, no, no. But you come to District Five and you see there's still homeowners and family members that really want to, obviously, stay in the city, but they're having trouble. And I'm looking to rebuild. I'm looking to, more importantly, unify just as much as one area or demographic is taken care of. As a black woman, I know that the entire district should be catered to. And that's my real mission in running, to support everyone and really bring those opportunities that I had growing up and that I rely on so heavily in my career.
So you are Western class of '07, so you are officially a millennial, right?
You know, I like that term, but I'm not tech savvy. So, you know, sometimes they try to pull my card.
So what does the 100th anniversary of women's suffrage mean to you?
It's tremendous. I actually can't even believe that at one time females, women could not vote. It's so just mind-blowing. As many contribution as we have seen from so many different female advocates, I'm just honored because now I have the ability to use my voice and my platform to continue the mission of so many women that stood in lines, that pushed back against the status quo. It's, you know, it's an honor to say, you know, during the 100th suffrage, I am a black woman who is actually running and able not only to run, but to vote and practice, which so many of, you know, long-loved people couldn't do. So it's tremendous.
Yes, yes. So if, if elected, you would be the first black female to hold this seat in District Five, if I'm correct?
Correction, correction, first black person ever. So person.
Oh, first black, excuse me. Yes, okay, first black person, okay?
Yes, yes.
All right. So where did you grow up? What area?
I grew up in Grove Park neighborhood. It's right there. Rogers, near Walbash, behind me. You know, there is Pimlico to the left of me. And so just right in the middle, my neighbors have been there 30-plus years. And so it was the best. I went to Grove Park Elementary School and I just want to keep Grove Park the pinnacle of the city. As I said, it's just such an eclectic, diverse.
It is. That, that, that is very, very diverse.
Yeah, Pimlico is, is the, is the area. We have so many different demographics, socioeconomic class. You have Roland Park, North Roland Park, you have Mount Washington, then you have where I live, Grove Park. You have Seaton Hall, then you have Fallstaff, and it's just Cheswell. It's just an array of people coming together. But that's where it's my job to win and be the next councilwoman because we all have needs and they all should be met collectively. And so I am a resource. I am an advocate and I'm a voice. And where one person, you know, may not feel they have to or want to obviously speak up for the everyman. I've been doing this all my life and I will continue to do it because it's my, it's my time now to show I'm here and I'm ready for the job.
All right. So speaking of the job, how difficult has it been campaigning during a pandemic?
Man, do you want to join the team? It's just honestly, it's good and it also has its challenges. I don't want to say I haven't been out there, but I've been taking the necessary precautions. You always have hand sanitizer. You're always wearing masks. Some people will gladly, hey, come and sit down. I haven't seen people, you know, I want to talk with you others, leave your literature, leave your flyer at the door. A guy yelled from his window once and said, no, thank you. But I actually, in campaigning so far, have found as a first-time candidate, that is a multi-faceted, facet, very exhilarating experience. One day, you know, taking calls, doing meetings on Zooms, and next day, I'm talking to voters on the phone. While in the evening, I'm going to events or I'm, you know, out there canvassing. So it's definitely a job for somebody that is got a lot of energy, somebody that wants to be, as myself, with the people, talking to the people. But it has, you know, both good sides and bad sides. Because I'm not going to say, you know, I wouldn't like to do more events and wouldn't like to be, you know, with, you know, as many as I can voters. But with that said, you know, the challenges, we just kind of navigate and we adjust, you know. It's going to be a new normal for a while, but in knowing that, we kind of catered our, or tailored, excuse me, our campaign to fit what's going on.
Absolutely. And so with that being said, the economic impact of this pandemic has been severe, especially to the communities that we grew up in. You feel that transparency has been lacking in the incumbent of the seat that you're running for?
So it's two things that I feel with the incumbent or the opponent, my opponent. You know, I don't know him personally. I'm sure he's a fantastic guy, you know, to all, you know, all candidates running. I, I, you know, I understand. We're all running for the same position. However, I will say there is a lack of accountability and there is a lack of transparency. I've been paying attention to, you know, for the last, I guess, 10 years, me being able to really participate in the political process, seeing that, you know, as a longstanding councilperson, this particular guy came in four years ago, new guy, and I think that's what democracy is. You have four years, you get elected to show what you're going to do. And if I can't account for actual things being done to support people that look like me, to support people, you know, on the other side of where you live, to support people that don't have the same socioeconomic status as you, I start to question, you know, your role and then pushing back and seeing certain, you know, articles, you know, I'm an advocate for reform, criminal justice reform. I talked to you about that. And so just seeing stories on how, you know, different things played out regarding some incidents that I saw, they were disheartening. And so I'm really coming in here saying, look, if we can't account for this, if you can show me that you've done something terrific. But, you know, I looked at the numbers. I looked at the data. I looked at the record. And there's really been nothing there that I can say wholeheartedly, I've benefited or I saw an impact for those that look like me, those that are different from me, those that are different, you know, and don't live in this one area. So, you know, accountability and transparency, I would say. I, I think there's a real need for change and that's why as a first-time candidate, understanding, being a resident for so long, I know with my, you know, specific experience and my really intentional platform to unify, to assist the lagging schools. Because I, I come from a family of teachers. There is a real problem when people are math and reading deficient and nobody is taking accountability. There's a real problem when we are receiving funds for economic development, but that money never gets allocated. And honestly, that's very simple to, a very, very simple fix. It's called accountability. It's called audit. My mission first two days, three days, first week in office is to spearhead an oversight committee. If we're receiving funds, if we want to properly allocate to the people in need, we have to have some type of audit and oversight. And I think people don't want to have that conversation because it's hard sometimes, but I'm not afraid to. And I'm not afraid to question and continuously question until I get answers, which I haven't been able to find.
Yeah. So you are a conservative, true?
I am a GOP Republican. I believe that, you know, don't trust the government. I want to limit it in their role and I want to more self-focus on, you know, my family, education, and the things that impact, you know, myself and others in need. So I would call myself a, you know, GOP Republican woman that is just looking to be the new Republican for change.
Okay, GOP is the grand old party, right?
Yeah.
And so I, I talk to people, I talk to independents, I talk to Democrats, I talk to Republicans. And any, anyone coming from the Republican side usually says what you're saying as far as money allocations has not been spent correctly. Do you have an example of a place that is run primarily by Republicans where money is spent right? And, I mean, because what, what I see is we have Democrats and Republicans who screw up. Misappropriate funds, who criminal activity, lining their pockets, et cetera, et cetera. And I, I don't think that this is a Democrat or Republican things. I know Republican crooks. I know Democratic crooks. And I think that this platform design, this talking point, that it's the Democrat way of doing things that, that misappropriates funds, I think is misguided.
No, I want to, I want to clarify. I don't think I said it's the Democratic.
You did not, you did not.
I want to say that in seeing that my community has received grant monies and seeing that the schools have poor infrastructure and have been closing. I don't know if this guy specifically for District Five, granted, he is a Democrat. So, you know, I don't conflate the two, but what I am saying is my role, my role for District Five, if elected for councilwoman, would be to say, look, I know that we have opportunities to receive monies. And it's our job to say, okay, these people are in need and these people, after we give them those funds, after we allocate that money, we audit. Because in two years, if we're seeing that this money is wasted, I'm specifically thinking about anything south of Northern Parkway. We've seen for years, you know, money being distributed, but we can't account for it. So if we can hold people accountable, if we can say Republican, Democrat, independent, or no affiliation, whoever is in office as leadership has to say, my district is no longer going to allow those who are stakeholders to go ahead and take money contractor overturned. It's ridiculous in the city, specifically in my, in my district. And so not only obviously looking at, you know, the need for obviously more oversight to craft somewhat of a plan where I spearhead, you know, a group where we audit. But, you know, there's another part to that, I think. If you look at leadership right now, there is a one-party system. Absolutely. If it worked, it worked, it worked. I'm all for, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Right now, we've seen specifically in District Five, because that's what I focus on. Where I live, where I grew up, where I go to church, you know, where I'm, we've seen an uptick in crime. We've seen that people are unfortunately, where I told you, I have neighbors that have been here for a while, but I also have families that move in that say, look, the schools are closing, there's vandalism. We can't stay here. We're going to move out to Annapolis. We're going to move out to Baltimore County. It's ridiculous that my, my kid has to, you know, take a bus across town. And so what that means to me is, okay, what has the leadership done to prevent these things? And again, one-party system, if they work, great. I don't look at people depending on it. I don't want people to look at me depending on party. I want to look at your tenure. What have you done for me? What can I point to to say this impacted my community? And so you look at the raising taxes. My family live in there. We see that, look, the property tax is high. Okay, maybe we can't curb the property tax. Maybe we can affect, you know, something else to alleviate this, you know, problem. We see that the water bill is high. We see that the small businesses are leaving because they can't compete. And so holistically, looking at every single side of it, education, looking at the crime, looking at, you know, as I just said, auditing and having oversight for resources, where we can look to put these, you know, obviously funds. Then that's where I come in as a person that says, I don't care, again, Republican, Democrat, or independent. I'm the better candidate. And yes, I do obviously, you know, have specific ideas and values, but that doesn't negate the fact that I know that human issue is education. Human issue is crime. Human issue is literally boosting the economy that I think overall, the Democrats and the Republicans and the independents can say that that's something that we need to fix.
Definitely.
Your time, and now it's time for somebody new to take that and spearhead, you know, a change.
How welcome would you be if elected to working across the aisle? You would definitely need some cooperation, some bipartisan cooperation.
So growing up, that is probably what I think is best preparing me for this role. Growing up, my dad was a Democrat and my mom, you know, was a Republican, a GOP woman. And so from early, early on, I just knew, you know, certain things we can disagree on, but certain things are human issues that we can agree on. And so I know wholeheartedly, I have colleagues, I have friends, some people that I talk to every day as mentors. They are Democrats. A lot of them being in my family, a lot of them, you know, being in the school system. So I know it's not even an issue. It's a conversation on, let's get to work immediately. I know Baltimore is hurting. I know I, if elected, can be the person that obviously my district told me to be. And as a person that is completely transparent, I will make it my mission to show the community I've done my job. And here's a literally outline platform of what I'm going to do and hold me accountable. Call me up. Make me, I will, I am available. You know, you can, you can directly get to me. People know me. So I'm very, very excited to, you know, hopefully get in there and make it a conversation where we can stop playing partisan shit, because nothing gets done. And in one-party system, unfortunately, sometimes there isn't that kind of pushback or that accountability. And I want to say, look, again, I'm a new Republican. Forget about what they told you. Grand old party is what they, you know, say to say, you know, that was the historic kind of branding of us. But, you know, you can call me a GOP woman. You can call me a new Republican. Because this girl understands what it means to be an advocate for the underdog, to be an advocate that unifies criminal justice is my background, you know, being a community team player is my background.
Absolutely. And a lot of things that you're saying definitely point to something new with regards to the Republican Party, very interesting with regards to that. How can people get in touch with you and help your campaign and, and support what you're doing?
So we are on every social media platform. We're on YouTube. We are on Instagram, Facebook. Getting into LinkedIn now just because I'm trying to cover everything.
Absolutely.
But the easiest way is my website, votevismail.com. That's O and then my last name. V is in Victor, I S M A L E. It's Dutch. My ancestors came over here. So I'm a black, you know, diverse woman. And I just know that, again, being a face to this new system where we expect and hold people accountable is what I stand for. So I, I definitely, you know, I'm asking people listening in the district to vote for me November 3rd.
And if, if elected, you said that the first thing that's, that's on your agenda is what?
So I want to get in there and start kind of seeing where all our resources and money is going. I want to, secondly, just obviously make sure the district is unified and offer the same resources that I see in a specific area to the entire community. Policing, community policing being one of those things, marshaling and having the support of, you know, individual contracted groups that come from the community. So we know that this particular gentleman isn't just somebody that I don't know that just joined the force. He comes from the community. He understands. He can respond accordingly. Because I was there when, you know, the George Floyd thing happened and I wrote immediate press release where I saw, you know, we are affected and the trauma and the remnants of that will cause this disdain. But I want to make sure that I support, obviously, you know, all the stakeholders, the community leaders, the residents. But I wanna make sure that I support obviously, you know, all the stakeholders, the community leaders, um, the residents. And obviously to the least, so we can feel safe and really uh, combat, you know, bad actors.
And uh, you know, you have bad actors out there. There's, there's a lot. Uh, there's, there's much work to do. And um, I wish you best of luck on your campaign and everything. Um, would you be willing to have a debate with your opponent?
Absolutely. I absolutely would love that. I think that that is the only way that people get a feel for who I am. And know the facts. Um, there is a need right now for political discourse and. Uh, I, I would absolutely love to have, you know, him and I virtually. I know we probably couldn't do it in person, but uh, to just talk about the issues and give the real solutions on how we would be the proper choice.
Wonderful, wonderful. Um, so we'll definitely see if, if he is open to, to something like that. Um, definitely, uh, I appreciate you uh, talking with me and talking with our listeners about uh, the very important work. That needs to be done uh, in Baltimore and especially in District Five.
Thank you so much. I do appreciate you. Uh, really glad to be here.
Absolutely. Thank you again.
Take care.
Bye-bye. Okay, everyone, uh, that was our interview for today. Of course, you can advertise, connect your message with our engaged audience here on Radio on Fire. Uh, three hundred fifty thousand listeners and viewers per month, radioonfire.com slash advertise is where you go. And if you want to uh, support the program via Cash App, you can do that as well, dollar sign DJ Diamond K. Follow the Diamond K Show on Spotify or your favorite podcast network. New shows drop daily on radioonfire.com and thediamondkshow.com. Of course, your donations help us continue to do what we do here on the Diamond K Show. And that's to bring you independent news, progressive opinion on politics, social issues, entertainment and so much more. Uh, for booking or media requests, djdiamondk@gmail.com. Until next time, if you see it, then you can be it. It is all about having vision. Shemane Diamond K and I will see you guys later on today after the Democratic DNC Convention.